My name is Jonathan Stevens. I'm going to let Suzanne and Michael give a brief announcement about our upcoming event.
Hi, I'm one of the co-chairs for the Charlottesville City Council. And we have our once-a-year fundraiser next month, March 23rd, at 6:00 to 9:00. We're going to have a great number of speakers to be announced later. And it's at Fry Spring Speech Club. So please go to our website to get them. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Sorry if that was loud. My name is Jonathan Stevens. We are LARA PAC, which stands for the Local Alliance for Urban and Rural Advancement. And we like to talk about boosting progressive candidates from school board to state senate. What we mean by that is, we are seeking folks who are community leaders. Maybe they're already local electives. People who want to be part of serving their community in local or, in some cases, state house office, general assembly. And connecting them with the resources to run sophisticated modern campaigns, to get their message out, to talk to voters, potential volunteers, potential supporters, just like you. And so that's why we're having an event here for our declared candidates in the Charlottesville City Council Democratic Primary, which is June 11th is our election day for these folks. And we are doing this right here early in the campaign season, so that you have a chance to hear from them about the issues. Now, I am going to conduct the proceedings here. We have eight questions, which are written on your program here. And then, at the end of our eight questions, we also will start off with a brief introduction from each candidate. At the end of our eight questions, there will be an opportunity for the candidates to have a little bit of free response time, where they'll continue to pass the microphone around, but they'll be able to say whatever they like and expand upon their earlier answers and that sort of thing. I'm going to randomly select who starts each of our four rounds, as well as introduction. They have numbers on the backs of their chairs. The candidates have 60 seconds for every response, except for the free response time at the end, which is 90 seconds. Isaac will be assisting me with the microphone. Laura Jackson will be assisting me with the timing. She will wave the yellow flag when they've got 15 seconds left. When they're out of time, they'll give the red flag. If they go a couple of seconds over, they'll get the red stop. That means business, that means peace. And the microphone to the next person. Pass the microphone to your left when you are done. So I am going to... That's easy. Number one. So hopefully that would be Mr. Pinkston. And you have your introduction, folks. Hear from him.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming. My name is Brian Pinkston. We've lived in central Virginia for nearly 15 years. My kids, there are three kids, they are past and present attendees of CHS and PDCC. Locally, I'm active in my church. I've been on the board of Region 10. And I've also been active with the Seabill Dallas. I work as a project manager over at the university in facilities management. I'm one of the people there to help kind of keep the university going around. I've been a project manager for 30 years. Hard to believe. I'm 47 years old, so that's a long time. I've done nearly 1,000 projects over my career. Project managers, you don't know what project managers do. They put people, resources, and ideas together to get things done. They know how to listen, define common ground, to make decisions, and to move forward. And I think that City Council would use someone with my expertise on council. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lloyd Snook. I want to start off by saying, Jonathan talked about being progressive. I used to call myself a liberal back when it was cool to be a liberal in the 60s. And then I called myself a liberal when it was not cool to be a liberal in the 80s and 90s. And I still call myself a liberal, but if you want to call me a progressive, that's fine, too. I don't think there's much difference. I've lived in Charlottesville, Charlottesville, been my home for 57 years. I went to local schools here. I graduated from Lane High School, class of 1970. Went off to Stanford, then Michigan Law School. Had to go to Michigan Law School to meet my wife, which I did. And then moved back here in 1979 and have practiced law here in Charlottesville ever since. Our kids all went to Charlottesville schools. They graduated from Lane, from Charlottesville High School. We're proud to call ourselves Charlottesvilleans, and we are proud to be working for the veteran of all of Charlottesville. Thanks for coming.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Sowick. It's a great day to be out here, because in just a little bit, I'm going to be making my pitch for bus shelters. It'd be pretty epic, though. I've done a lot of things. I have been in business for over 50 years as a construction contractor. I have produced and acted in PBS Home Improvement series. I've written novels. Recently, I served on the city council, so I think I have a pretty deep background of what it takes to get us going in the better direction. Because basically, we have a beautiful city, we've hit a bump in the road, and I think we can do better. So it's great that you all made the effort to come out on a day like this, and we'll just see where this goes. Thank you.
Hi, thank you all for coming tonight, for today. My name is Sina McGill. I'm running. I'm basically because I want Charlottesville to be a great place for everyone to live. I grew up around the area. I went to Tandem and PDCC, UVA. My daughter goes to Walker. We lived in Tenth and Page for the last 15 years. Worked at Region 10. Pacha, I'm going to go own a business on the downtown lawn. And again, I'm running because I want this to be a great city for everybody. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michael Payne. I grew up in the area. I'm a community organizer and co-founder of Indivisible Charlottesville, as well as an affordable housing advocate, who's worked for Habitat for Humanity, Virginia, and with the Charlottesville Income Housing Coalition. And I'm running because for myself, and I think a lot of community members, Charlottesville is facing a significant number of challenges in terms of our affordable housing crisis, rising levels of income and wealth inequality, and racial inequity in the city. And I think what's needed now is a community organizing approach that can work across differences, elevate the work that's being done in the community, and bring people together around a vision of progressive change for the city. Because while we are facing significant challenges on affordable housing and inequality, this is also an incredible community of committed people who are doing an incredible amount of work. And I think if council can start to lift that work, I think we can become a statewide model for how cities address the affordable housing crisis and other issues of racial and economic inequality. Thank you.
So we have divided the questions into... We've divided the questions into four categories, just trying to group them together by the general topic. We received the questions from the general public, from everybody who's been interested in our PAC. And in fact, we requested the candidates to submit questions, which they all did. And we tried to combine as many of the sort of subparts of questions as we could within the timeframe we had. So hopefully, we've done a good job of that. And the first question is under a category that we've grouped as housing infrastructure. And I have picked out on the hand number three, which looks like it's Mr. Fenwick. So Bob will get the first reply. I will read the question. The first question is, "The limited supply of affordable housing here in the city of Charlottesville is an issue at the forefront of our city's current political discussions. Is this a problem council can address? What concrete steps will you take if elected?"
I've been a construction contractor for probably 40-plus years. I have renovated a number of houses in town. And one of the problems that I ran into when I was doing that work was working with the city. So I think, and I have brought to my former council, we're trying to explain to the staff that a small business particularly depends on the government to run smoothly. And it does nobody any good for you to try to get into a project and find out there's... You have to jump over through certain hoops that you didn't realize were there. So I have a pretty good knowledge of what it takes to do that kind of work. But my overriding philosophy would be in affordable housing, would be to take care of simple things first. We don't need to have brand-new those plans about high rises and all that. We have plenty of units now in the city that can be repaired within a matter of months. I always do the simple things first and try to expand the...
Hi. First, yes, the city council, we can absolutely do something about affordable housing. In psychology, there's a principle called Maslow's Hybrid of Needs. We cannot address our well-being until our shelter and food are safe and secure. They're a basic human need. I've had some ideas. One idea I've had is to incentivize and streamline the accessory dwelling unit process, so that current homeowners can have a small rental unit on their current property. I know this is not going to address the whole housing issue, but it's things like this that we can look at and look at outside-of-the-box thinking about trying to make this problem be solved. Additionally, we do need to be working with UVA about addressing the housing crisis, because UVA students are wonderful. I was one. But they are also taking our housing inventory.
We need an approach that provides housing at all levels. And I think one of the first things we can do is reform rezoning. It hasn't had a comprehensive update since 2004. It's not updating. It's not working for anyone. So we need to reform it, and we need to explore significantly reducing or eliminating single-family zoning. Cities across the country are doing this. It's preventing us from building duplexes and triplexes, and it would make a huge difference. Second, we need to invest in redevelopment of public housing. That's the only way we can provide housing for those at zero to 30% of area-oriented income. If we don't invest in public housing, we're going to be sacrificing the needs of our citizens most in need. And third, the city needs to find out ways to strategically support our nonprofit housing sector. If we can find ways to have a comprehensive affordable housing strategy with a funding mechanism to support our community land trusts, our habitats, our PHAs, our AHIPS, we can provide a housing stock that provides opportunities for people not only to rent, but to eventually become homeowners and build wealth and generational equity.
Yeah, so this is definitely a problem that council can and should address. Charlottesville needs to be a town not only for people that are well-off, but for all of us. From price-out our police and teachers, then what sort of city are we? The legacy of racism obviously adds a new layer to this. Many of our African-American citizens have been unable to build up wealth by home ownership and so they now struggle in the face of rising costs. I firmly agree that existing housing such as Crescent Hall, West Haven, and Friendship Court needs to be brought up to safe, good standards. They've gone years without significant upgrades. It's hard to talk about future proposed housing, though we haven't taken care of existing stock. Beyond this, I think there are no simple answers to the affordable housing crisis. It's a complicated project, a problem. We should consider increasing housing density, absolutely. We need accessory dwelling units. And we need to remind the university you can be a good neighbor.
So one of the problems of being last is that I end up saying, "Yes, yes, yes, I agree." And I do agree with a couple of observations in particular. One is that I think we can, in fact, make some changes to permit more accessory dwelling units, as they're sometimes called. Back in the 80s, when I was on the planning commission, we considered a proposal that would have permitted what we were calling at that point, mother-in-law apartments in single-family zoning areas. That would be something that would matter, that would help. I also think as a general proposition, though, we need to start thinking of ourselves as a 21st-century city, not as a 20th-century town. We have made a number of decisions along the way that are town decisions, they're not city decisions. They're not decisions that recognize that density is actually, in some instances, a good thing. And so when we start talking about things like the university having more skin in the game, we start talking about things like changing single-family zoning, it's all with the idea that we end up with being a 21st-century state.
Okay, so microphone issue is sorted there. The next question will also be taken first by Fenwick, and then when we get to the next segment, I'll draw again for the order. So the second question is, "Let's take a look at our city's infrastructure and zoning. There is a need for development services, NDS, efficiency study to consider. Do we need to reform how we implement zoning? We've had questions about traffic congestion impact statements for specialty use permits, SPUs. What changes can we make by council to support rural transportation and efficiency in the city? What are the potential downsides of any such changes?"
Well, I would suggest before we go into redesigning our own zone, that we review what we have already. What the situation that we've been in now is, there are so many special use permits, the SUPs, that are routinely approved, that give a developer two additional floors usually. And if we're going to talk about housing, we should be honest about it. There is, are we talking affordable housing, are we talking subsidized housing? If we are subsidizing high-rise apartments or condos, I don't think we should be ashamed about talking about subsidized housing for people who are in desperate need of shelter. The second thing, the public transportation. When we get to the bus shelters, we'll consider it, and I thought we would. If we want to make public transportation a main standard that we move around the city on, we have to be able to let people use it on days like this.
So I live off Preston Avenue in the Tenth and Page neighborhood. And over the last couple of years, I can tell you, the traffic problem is very real. Beyond that, I don't know a whole lot. And that is what I'm committing to learn about and make sure that I am talking to people who are experts and who have been spending the time for the last few years learning about these areas, so that I can talk to them and utilize their expertise without becoming a bit of a jack-of-all-trades. Basically, I'm committing to learning and listening to anybody who will talk to me.
So I think the issue with Neighborhood Development Services, NDS, is actually one of the most important and under-discussed issues. Because when we talk about zoning reform, that is done through NDS. And the efficiency studies show that we have not invested in city staff enough. So NDS is in constant crisis management mode, and they're not able to look at zoning, they're not able to do strategic long-term planning. And so I think we need to do staff positions in NDS, and we need to take the time to invest in it, to make sure that we can do housing right, and we're giving city staff the resources they need. In terms of public transportation, I think anybody who's used public transit here knows it simply does not work, particularly for working families, particularly for people who work hours, that don't have regular jobs, that don't have regular schedules. I think in order to get to a robust public transportation system, we need to create a regional transit authority. Because the only way public transit succeeds is when you have regular stops with routine, frequent stops. That's the only way you start to build ridership. And so we need a regional transit authority in Charlottesville and Almorel, and we need to make sure that our bus stops are accessible, stay in the same place, and have cover so you can use them at all times. Thank you.
Right, so I agree with what's been said, as stated, about the need to update our zoning rules in the city. Because we've become a city and become a place that needs updating with our zoning. We need to consider form-based approaches to zoning beyond the conventional approaches. We should remember, too, that historically, there was a racial component to zoning rules. I believe that we need to balance the physical character of specific neighborhoods. There's a lot of people that are concerned about high-density preservation. We need to balance that with the need for affordable housing. And I think that these are matters about which reasonable people can disagree, which is the reason why we need dialogue on this. There's a lot of good work going on on this matter, on these matters right now, with the planning commission, and then with the update on the comprehensive plan. That said, updating these rules will take years. I think that as a project manager and engineer, I have to go through this conversation. Thank you.
So there are a few things, just to comment, one on the form-based code. I was at a presentation last night where some people were talking about the form-based code as being, if improperly used, an instrument itself of white supremacy, of racist application. So it's a tool. It's only a tool. What matters is who's wielding the tool. And so what I want, I want to be one of the people who helps wield that tool. I have to be clear, I want to be one of five, not the only one. And I want to be working with the other four people here. A lot of the, I've read the Neighborhood Development Services Efficiency Study. There's a lot there to talk about. Most of it has to be talked about with the new city manager. And most of it is going to get talked about before any of us take office. So to a certain extent, it's the wrong issue for us to be talking about. I do think that we can do a lot to improve transportation in the city, and one of them, frankly, again, getting back to my theme of thinking like a 21st-century city, is that we have to be willing to accept greater density, and then transportation works. Thanks.
Okay, so I've drawn number two for the next section. So Lloyd can just hang on to his microphone and prepare to respond to the next question. So our next segment will, I think, hopefully segue somewhat off some of the issues our council were discussing in the previous one. We title it Equity, Social, and Racial Justice. And the first question in this segment is, "White communities across the country, we have a long history of systemic inequities and injustices here in Charlottesville. But since August 12th of 2017, we have become a national symbol with respect to our nation's ongoing struggle with racism and many injustices that have allied with our national models. If elected, how will you be sure you are hearing from and representing all members of the Charlottesville community, especially members who are less empowered? Have we done anything better since August 12th, 2017? What else can we do that we haven't done well enough yet?"
Well, so there are a couple of different things to talk about there. One is in terms of, how would I know that I'm talking to everybody or hearing from everybody? And I guess, some odd reverb here. One of the things that we obviously need to make sure that we do is to have a lot of different ways for people to have input. I've got a couple of different email addresses that are publicly available. I've got phone numbers that are publicly available. My law office is right downtown. People, in fact, even now, walking in to start talking about things. I also have a Facebook page that many people will recognize as two basic principles that lead to a lot of discussion. I've got Tea Party Republicans contributing, and I've got my anarchist sons contributing, and everybody in between. The only two rules, number one, no name-calling, and number two, no false news memes. Other than that, free range, let's talk. I don't always respond, but I do listen and I do learn. So that's something that I think can help. Again, we only got 60 seconds to talk. Those are my 60 seconds.
Well, the easiest way to find out what the city is thinking is to go out and talk to people. If you come to my office, the door is probably going to be closed, because I'm not at the neighborhood associations. I'm at the churches, I'm at committee meetings, talking one-on-one with people around town, businesses downtown, the mall. So when you go, when I go, I just find they're much, it's a much more comfortable conversation if I talk to somebody in their place of business, or in their home, or even on the street. One of the best ways to promote community is to start with the family. And that's what I have had on my A-list, is community centers, and making sure they're open 24 hours a day, fully staffed. Toster Field House was in the budget, and it was taken out of the budget. That was put back in. I worked pretty hard to get that back in. And mentoring and inclusion programs, so parents can be sure they're home with their families.
I think the first thing that I need to recognize in this is that I am a white woman who has never experienced racism. So in order to understand how members of our community experience racism, that means I have to go to them, and I have to ask, and I have to be willing to honestly listen. I've spent 16 years in mental health. All of that was through training on how to listen and how the problem is solved with what I was hearing from the person. And here, the persons, and help the person work through the solutions that they found for themselves. And that is exactly what I plan to do.
Yeah, so I mean, I think racial inequity is nothing new in Charlottesville. It's just that after the summer of 2017, more people became aware of it. And we have some pretty striking statistics in Charlottesville. African-American students are four times as likely to interact with police in schools than white students. Over the past 10 years, income has increased for every demographic group in Charlottesville, except our African-Americans residents who saw their income decrease. And we have, and the unemployment rate for African-American residents is double what it is for everyone else. And in terms of addressing these systemic inequities, which are rooted in public policies throughout the 20th century, which were intentionally designed to prevent African-American residents from having access to homeownership and wealth building, we need to flip that and implement public policy that's intentionally trying to build community wealth. And I would take a community organizing approach for doing that, in terms of listening and following the lead of the people who have been doing this work, the people who are most affected by systemic racism, and allowing them to drive that process, and just uplifting the work already being done there.
Thank you. And so I grew up in the Deep South. And as challenging as we find race and equity in Charlottesville, and it is, I am heartened that this community has awareness of and a desire to overcome the tragedies of the past. Clearly, much more work remains to be done. The first thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to canvass just as much of the city as I possibly can. I really want to get in touch with all parts of the community. I've begun that work already. People are telling me about particular needs, such as roads, storm drains, bus routes, as well as affordable housing in schools. If elected, I will continue to proactively seek out these voices and listen to many different voices. August 11th and 12th has brought to the forefront voices and perspectives that have historically been marginalized, and the anger that's arisen is understandable. But I hope that we can move forward into something good and helpful. To that end, I support calls for a Truth and Reconciliation Commission.
So if you're following our monitoring program, the second question in the Equity segment, which is the fourth question overall, is on the PAC from the flip side. And Lloyd Snook will once again be the first to respond. Effective and just policing policies are clearly part of a just and equitable society. This is at the core of the Black Lives Matter movement and other efforts to address structural problems and criminal justice that can endanger citizens' livelihoods and lives at stake. Thus, we have found ourselves in fraught policing environment, and we have read recently about problems with retaining police officers. Do you think this is a real problem? Meaning, the policing in general, or that are retaining police officers? And if so, how would you want the city to respond?
Well, first of all, I need to say about police policies. I first, as far as I can recall, I first challenged racially discriminatory police practices in Charlottesville about 30 years ago. And I've been fighting on that battle for a long time. I was dealing with racial discrimination in the administration of the death penalty 39 years ago, when I first started practicing law, and argued my first case in the US Supreme Court, and won my first case in the US Supreme Court, arguing about the racially discriminatory application of the death penalty in 1986. It's a problem I'm well acquainted with. And it's something that we need to continue to deal with, and hopefully, our new police chief will get her feet on the ground and be able to deal with it. The recent, there was news just this morning about the civilian review board, and I think touches on a very important thing. We have given to the Civilian Review Board the charge to figure out its own charge, and it hasn't been spending its time on things that I think it should be spending its time on. One, that is very low-hanging fruit, is a couple of very simple police practices that if they were documented, they could establish these things need to be changed, and that we don't need data to do that.
Well, the Civilian Review Board certainly is one of the most important things the city is undertaking now. And we have to remember, this is new territory for the city. It wasn't, but a couple of years ago, we had the Disproportionate Minority Contact Report came down and said, if you're black, you're so much more apt to be stopped by police and arrested by the police. And we have made efforts in that situation, but it's going to be an ongoing project that we have for a long time. Now, as we go into the budget situation, one of the programs, one of the areas that I would not look for savings would be in police training. Right now, the paradigm is sort of, if you want to beef your squads up on procedures and all that, you get on the computer and you take a computer test. I would encourage them to go out in the field and actually put hands on people for themselves. So they get a feeling of the, of the sometimes chaotic nature of these interactions.
First part of that question, are police need to be paid a competitive salary? Shouldn't be training police to then go on to a better paying position someplace else? That's smart business. Secondarily, I believe that we need to be educating our law enforcement to recognize racial bias. As our own stop and frisk data shows, our teachers have racial bias training. I believe that all of our city employees should have racial bias training, all of our public servants. This is something we need to recognize and take care of.
Again, I think, you know, discriminatory policing practices are not new. This is something that has been around for decades. Particularly discriminatory use of stop and frisk. In recent years, data has shown that 70% of people stopped for stop and frisk were African-American. And particularly after the summer of 2017, I think, you know, there's definitely a problem where there's a breakdown of trust between the local community and the police department. And I think we need to recognize that that has deep historical roots, and that in order to get to a different place requires accountability, it requires transparency. I think the Civilian Police Review Board can potentially be a tool for doing that. And I think, I think, you know, we need to take the lead, again, of the people most affected by these policies who have been doing this work for years. As for retention, I think a lot of it ties into the affordable housing crisis. Charlottesville is not unique in a problem of retention, UVA and other communities have. And I talked to nurses, firefighters, even city staff who aren't able to afford to live in the city, and I think that has a problem when people who are policing the city aren't able to live in it.
Yes, this is absolutely a real problem. I attended a recent meeting of the Police Civilian Review Board, and I was impressed by the work that these people were doing. They were looking for models to copy to use here in Charlottesville. That gets a great approach. They clearly care about the public. But I was also impressed with how they interacted with some of the members from the police of the Nellie Association in the room that night. They were respectful, they were thoughtful. I thought it was a great meeting. I agree with the things that have been said, that people in our community are going to have a really difficult time regaining the trust of the police after the failures of leadership in August 12th, on the part of the city, in the police department. But, I'm confident we're going to be able to move past that and on to a better future. Again, many of these problems precede August 12th. These are historic issues in our city. They won't be solved easily, and we need to continue to work on this issue.
My name tag won't stay put. So that concludes that segment. I have drawn the number one, again. Seems to be Mr. Pinkston's lucky or unlucky day in that regard. So we can just pass the microphone to Mr. Pinkston for the first response to our next segment, which we've titled Budgeting Revenue and Spending. So this is question five, if you're following along. Let's talk money. Recent budget sessions have focused on a significant budgetary shortfall. A large plurality of the people with whom we've spoken here at Lower Pack have asked about city spending revenue policies and what we can expect from the next council. Here's partialism to that in statement. The meal tax, the lodging tax, fees, the school's budget, some of the proposals to add affordable housing, which we already discussed. What do you see as the right way to strike a balance between spending and revenue?
Right, so we all want better schools and housing, but the question is, how do we pay for them? I've been working to understand the Charlottesville budget, especially the capital improvement plan. There are many worthwhile projects on that list. Ultimately, I think we're going to have to prioritize really worthwhile projects that need to be delayed. Housing and schools need to be done over a longer timeframe. Projects like paving roads and building sidewalks and keeping the lights on the downtown mall working are really, really important. We need our city to function at its most basic levels. We have to frame these needs in terms of constraints on revenue, right? So, in terms of thinking of how much we should borrow and how much taxes citizens are prepared to pay. But we should also do more than the money that we already have. I think we need a balance focusing on both spending and revenue. My work as a project manager involves finding money and cutting costs. I'm not ruling out tax increases or bonds, but we need to understand how these will affect us. Mules taxes will affect business owners, and real estate taxes will get passed on.
I spent some time reading the efficiency study that was done, City, about a year ago. The product came out about a year ago. And one of the things that struck me was, reading between the lines, the experts are telling us that we have not been a well-managed city. And we have not been a well-managed city for some years. And that's one of the reasons why I put as my first priority on my palm card, if you got it out front, says, basically, get the city functioning well again. There is chaos at the top, that's starting with city council, but not limited to city council. It's, hopefully, with a new city manager, begin to address some of those things. As far as the specific issues, how I would reconcile things in this particular budget year, I won't have to do it in this particular budget year, but the overall issue for next year, keep in mind two things. One is, real estate taxes, one penny on the real estate tax rate gives us about $700,000 a year. That's not going to, raising the taxes isn't going to be the answer to everything. The second thing related to that is, we have to be willing to allow developers to build the product, the projects that are going to be able to give us a tax base.
Well, you can see as we work our way through these questions, some of them, some of them are intertwined. And the money question is intertwined with affordable housing. Real estate taxes go up, who do you think, who do you know pays that increase? It's not the property owner, it's not the landowner, it's the renter. So, these, when you raise real estate taxes, we have to be sure we understand who is going to be most affected by these taxes. And I noticed on the sheet that we got on the questions, it was tax, tax, tax. Well, the city budget is really not that much different than our family budget. And most of us think, save, save, save. Where can we save money without affecting the basic mission of the city? And I would, I would ask somebody, and I will go with them after this meeting, if we go down to West Main Street, and you show me what the results of $4 million has given us.
So when I worked in mental health, I had to help people learn how to live on $640 a month in this town. That's now $750 a month, for those who live on social security disability. I also ran a program that was a multimillion-dollar program where I had to be accountable to my income revenue stream and my, what I was paying for. Running a business on the downtown mall, I had to evaluate when I bought something and how long I was going to take to sell it. And then, again, as Bob mentioned, in a family budget, I've had to sit around a dining room table, and when our family wanted something new, sit down and figure out how we were going to make that happen, whether it meant going out and getting a second or third job, or whether it meant cutting some other expenses. I can't tell you exactly right now what I would do with this budget, but if I get elected, I would be looking at how I would, what I would do to that budget.
So I've been attending budget work sessions for a while now, and our city is in a pretty difficult position because for years councils kicked the can down the road on important investments. We have, in this draft budget, a $6 million shortfall. We're paying $10 million a year in debt payments. The city staff says that that goes up much more. Our bond rating could be in danger. And, the reality is, we, now we're having to make investments in affordable housing, our schools, and infrastructure. And by the way, those $10 million in debt payments includes none of the schools' requests for $50 million for modernization and expansion. And so I think ideally, we will be able to meet that gap without tax increases, but if we reprioritize to our top priorities being, one, affordable housing, two, our students in school, three, our infrastructure, and city staff says we're still not there, I'm not willing to sacrifice our focus in public housing, I'm not willing to sacrifice students, and I think we can't give in to the austerity politics being pushed by Trump and Republicans in Congress that says it's not worth investing in our communities. If we don't make that investment now, it will only hurt us more long-term. We can't just air it over here.
So once again, Brian Pinkston will begin with the first response for the next question, the second one in this segment, which is question number six overall. We are going to drill down a little deeper here on two specific revenue issues. Do we need a different or more progressive real estate tax? Given increased assessments, how can you get community buy-in for major changes to taxes? In this case, the real estate taxes. In parallel with our discussion of taxes and other revenue sources, please address the city's borrowing. What value should we place on our triple-A bond rating?
Right, so as to a more progressive real estate tax, I think we're stuck with the current system for the foreseeable future because this is a Dillon Rule state that's something control of the General Assembly. And it still leaves open the question of how to prevent landlords from passing on tax increases to renters, that would still be an issue. In my door knocking so far, I'm seeing little appetite for increasing property taxes, real estate taxes. It's not hard to understand, given how assessments have skyrocketed in the last decade. The data I've seen shows that we've averaged about 4% a year in increase in assessments over the last 10 years. So people have felt an effective tax increase for years. We should also remember that a recession could happen, even in Charlottesville. What happens if the housing market tanks? We need to plan for future recessions. Council needs, I believe firmly in this, council needs to make a case to voters for why they should be asked to pay for particularly large projects, and perhaps really large investments are required for them. It's absolutely crucial that we maintain our AAA bond rating, otherwise we're going to pay much more interest in the future.
Let me start off by saying, by putting a number on that. If we were to go, to lose our AAA bond rating, the estimate is that it would cost us an extra $7.5 million. I think that's a year in, but it might be over a period of time. If it is $7.5 million a year, that is more than the current deficit that we are looking at. So, let's not endanger that AAA bond rating. First of all, it's an expression of character, I suppose, in a sense, but it's also a very practical problem, that if we lose the AAA bond rating, it costs more for everything we want to do. As far as what we do, you know, we can't change the structure of our real estate tax unless the General Assembly allows us to do so. The one thing we can do if we increase the tax rate is to also, there is a permissible basis for some kind of tax relief, but it doesn't apply to everybody, and it would not really solve the problem. As far as getting buy-in, if we do have to increase taxes, I think the most important thing that people, people are not all that, I mean, yes, they don't want to pay taxes, but they want to pay taxes for a government that works. That's what we need to fix.
Well, I also have not heard or anybody tell me that they're in a big hurry to raise their own taxes. And it's interesting, I've heard two different figures, 20 years and 40 years, since the real estate tax rate was raised. Now, that's a long period of time with many, many councils, and for some reason, this council is having a very difficult way going about this. So I would not phrase the question as, how do we convince the citizens of Charlottesville that they need this? I would, I would go to the citizens of Charlottesville, the businesses, the renters, schools, all of them, and as I have done in the past, and ask them, what are your thoughts on this? We have a city full of experts, not just because everybody has a family budget, but we have retired people here who have gone through this before. And I don't think we have begun to, to take advantage of the talent that is in this room, actually. And that's the way I would approach it.
I am not afraid to admit that I know very little about AAA bond ratings, and I know very little about progressive taxes. Frankly, don't know if we can even obtain a progressive tax without engaging the General Assembly and with the Dillon Rule. I do know that Canada, whilst it's AAA rating, it took it seven years to regain it. And I also know that part of being on council is when to know when you have to go talk to experts, and multiple experts, and listen to them and trust them about what the consequences of your actions are.
Well, look, I would say, you know, just speaking personally for myself, I make a little bit more than minimum wage. Forty, fifteen percent of my income goes to rent. Were it not for Medicaid expansion, I would not have access to health insurance. I budget dollar by dollar each month. So I don't take tax increases lightly. It would impact my budget, I realize there's a trade-off. So I think we have to show to our citizens that we've done the due diligence on council to make sure that we've reprioritized the budget as much as we can, that we've cut wasteful spending. But if we do that, and it gets to the point where city staff is telling us, we're not going to be able to afford both infrastructure, affordable housing, and our schools, we have to be willing to make that investment. We can't continue to kick the can down the road. And I think even how it impacts myself, it's worth it, because the value of that investment has a bigger impact long-term, that it is worth it. As for our AAA bond rating, we absolutely can't lose that. And again, we're in danger of getting there because of how much we're spending on debt payments. If we lose the AAA bond rating, then our deficit increases because debt payments increase. As for progressive taxation, ideally, we could, the Dillon Rule doesn't allow us to do that. Hopefully, we can support House of Delegates candidates throughout Virginia to change that. But in the meantime, we can expand the tax rebate program to people making up to $65,000 a year to provide tax relief.
Okay, we are moving on at a lovely clip. So, that is something I would like to thank the candidates for, even here in the local forum. We're on the final segment of structured questions, which is education and the environment. And I have drawn number three, so that is Bob Thimmer, to be the first responder for this segment. And the first question in the segment, which is the seventh question overall, is, public education is perhaps the greatest responsibility of local government. If elected to council, how do you envision working with the school board? Can you meet the needs of our schools and the school board's budgets? If not, what are the remedies? Also, past council elections have focused on preschool and early education. Do you have plans to advance or build all these initiatives?
Well, I guess the first thing is to remind people that the school board has an elected board. And that's a very important election, so find out what's going on with that as well. I remember we had a briefing over at Beaufort, I think it was, where two of the most poised young people that I have ever seen gave us a briefing on some obscure mathematics thing. And it was an incredible performance. And I remember asking, after the meeting, if I could meet with some of the young fellows who were having difficulty in school. Because with my Because with my background, serving in the army and being involved in sports, and really just getting in trouble when I was a kid, I thought I could help some of those youngsters. I never did get that meeting. So when I'm talking about, when I'm thinking about education, I'm thinking about the young people who are about to fall through the cracks or who some people would label as low performers. I think everybody has a talent, whether it's as a coach, or an actor, or whatever.
Well, as a mom of a 10-year-old who's right over there, the schools are incredibly important to me. I'm actually going to take this in a slightly different direction and say, I want to bring this fight to Richmond. And I want to go and talk to the General Assembly about making a lot of money back to what it was in Richmond for, which was to be a supplement to the General Assembly's allocation in their budget, not an excuse to keep cutting the General Assembly's allocation and budget to our schools. We need to be addressing our racial equity issues, and we need to be supporting our school board in doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I think public education and our public schools are one of the most important investments we can make as a community. As others have mentioned, we have an elected school board who do most of the implementation. But as council, we can support the work they do, and we also provide funding. I think, you know, in terms of public education, I think we need to be working with the school board to address the achievement gap. There's investigative report in the New York Times that showed our achievement gap in Charlottesville schools is significant. The same opportunities to African-American students. The opportunities that exist for white students and white students don't always exist for African-American students. That's something that we need to confront head-on. And I also think, you know, we need to think about, you know, as a community, when we implement zoning reform, that means increased population, that means more students in city schools. So I think we need to be finding out a way to support the schools to make sure that there's not overcrowding, that our schools are able to keep up with increased population. And I would also agree with Sina's point. I mean, I think a lot of this involves action enrichment. And I think we need to be supporting the work that CEA has been doing to use our platform on council to say, the General Assembly has to do better. We have to invest in our schools and give our teachers the resources they need to succeed.
Right, so I absolutely support the request by the school board to renovate Beaufort and to build a sixth or eighth grade new school. Reducing the number of transitions for students is very important to the overall achievement. Excuse me. To my mind, nothing can help us tackle intergenerational poverty like well-functioning schools. They're only part of the story, but they're an important part. The other perhaps overlooked piece of all of this is that we really need well-off parents to remain committed to the public school system, particularly the middle school grades. I have three kids of my own. I completely understand that parents want their children to have safe, well-functioning, disruption-free schools. But there are reasons for misbehavior. Not enough school counselors, the need for additional training for teachers, and above all, poverty. In addition to safe, wholesome facilities and well-paid staff, I think we need to think about wraparound services for families and students. We should think about childcare. These are all parts of a solution. Again, the issue is paying for these things, and it's a matter of prioritizing.
So when I started my campaign, I articulated three basic goals. First was to get government working well again. Second is to start planning like a 21st century city and not a 20th century town. And the third was to break the pipeline to prison. I want, I phrased it that way on purpose because we often talk about the school-to-prison pipeline, which is grossly unfair to the schools since the schools only have our kids six hours a day, and we've got them 18 hours a day. And they've got problems like housing that they're not, that they're coming back to that's inadequate, or sometimes they're actually homeless. They've got food deficits that they're coming back to. Those are things we can help with. We can help with educational opportunities. We can help with tutoring opportunities. We can help with recreational opportunities to provide 18 hours a day of better care for those kids so that when they come to school for the six hours a day, they're better equipped. One of the problems that we see over and over with the kids coming to school is that, that may be the only time of the day that they are actually safe. That may be the only time of the day they're actually getting fed, that they're warm. That's something we can change outside of the schools, and we have to. So the second question in our education and the environment segment is also the final structured question of the forum. And Bob Thimmer will once again be the first responder. It's the eighth question, if you're following along. Global climate change is one of the great challenges facing our planet. Clearly, a small city cannot base down global warming alone. But many of us want to know what we can and will do as a city. Also, there are no shortages of local environment resources. May it be worthwhile that we choose a purposeful economic inequality, but state, would you take as councillor to make Charlottesville a green city? Can we, or should we be a model city in this regard?
Well, first of all, I absolutely do believe in climate change. And I'm not born in Minnesota, and I don't, I don't know how many people in here come from Minnesota. But if you ask them what that means in the native language, you'll understand. Climate does change back and forth. People have an effect on the climate. The East Coast, to a greater degree than today, used to feel the effects of acid rain from the Midwest because it blew over us. But climate change is much more than that high-level discussion. It's glyphosate. It's the pesticides we use in our gardens or on the food that we eat. It's the natural areas. Ragged Mountain, I fought to keep Ragged Mountain as a sanctuary park, actually. Bicycles are good because we can use bikes in another part of the park. But it's to preserve the open space we have. Even when I was fighting for McIntyre Park, I saw nothing wrong with having a park where you could go and just have solitude. So it's the general environment and just a local environment.
We should always strive to be a model city. And this is an area that we can be known for something positive nationwide. We have so many opportunities here to help show Charlottesville being a truly green city. We have a world-class university that can help us figure these problems out. We have local businesses like Apex Wind Energy, Sephora Solar. And we need to be engaging to reduce our carbon footprint. And we need to also be setting an example with our finances and including our city investments and divesting from fossil fuels.
Yeah, I mean, I really think climate change is the biggest issue facing society. Quite frankly, it terrifies me, but I think we can and must become a model city. I think, one, we can do that by, one, having an economic development strategy that makes renewable energy the heart of our local economy. Two, we can divest from fossil fuels. New York City and other cities have done it. There's no reason we can't. Three, in June, the city is setting an emissions reduction target goal. I think we should have that aligned with the science coming from the UN by having that be a goal of 100% clean energy by 2030. Four, we need to move away from being a car-centric city. We need to eliminate off-street parking requirements for new developments. We need to invest in a comprehensive network of pedestrian and bike trails. And we need to invest in a regional public transportation system. And lastly, I think we need to collect data on expected climate change impacts. We know that's going to change floodplains and stormwater runoff. And historically, affordable housing has been built in floodplains. If we don't collect data and change our planning to reflect climate change, it's going to be low-income communities and affordable housing that sees increased flooding and the first and worst impacts.
Right, so I think one of the best things that we can do on this particular issue is to increase density. The more dense our living is in general, the less impactful we are on the planet. We can gain efficiencies in terms of energy and water usage, and obviously, land. We also need to do the simple things well, like having well-functioning electrical grids and pipes that don't leak. We should ensure that our HVAC systems and our facilities are operating as efficiently as possible. We should build new facilities to the best environmental design standards. We should use efficient lighting in our street ramps. Our vehicle fleet needs to meet appropriate regulations. One overlooked connection here, I think, is trails, walkways, and bike paths. So obviously, walking impacts the planet less than driving. But there's an important justice connection here in that many people that lose their licenses because of inequities in the justice system can only walk to work. So this is a great way to connect the issue of a justice problem with environmental need as well. We should certainly strive to be a model city in all things, but I think we should be careful of flashy initiatives and focus on what we do, not some bold suggestion.
I think we have to recognize that a lot of the rhetoric around green cities and so on has to do with things that are largely symbolic. That doesn't mean they are meaningless, but let's be clear about what's symbolic and what's substantive. There are some things that are symbolic because they don't have a lot of substantive impact. For example, Bush for green roofs on city buildings. Yeah, it's nice, but it doesn't solve the problem in any significant degree. Divestment is something, you know, from, from energy stocks and so on. Right now, about 1% of our investment portfolios in energy stocks, that can certainly be divested. It's not a problem. I can tell you, having been two years as an investment analyst, there are plenty of good stocks out there. If you want to know someone, I'll give you the codes afterwards, and we can talk. They can be investing in those. What I really think we ought to be doing, though, for the city and its substantive is by dealing with urban planning that is 21st century city planning, density, transportation. We know that millennials want more urban housing, not more suburban housing. Let's take advantage of that. Okay, so we have now reached the end of our structured questions on our program. And we are right on schedule, beautifully on schedule. Thank you very much. And so now, hopefully, this works well and you enjoy it. But we've come to the slightly experimental portion. Some of these forums in the past have been structured all the way through. We thought it would be enlightening and interesting to let the candidates have a chance to simply speak their minds, go back and address topics already addressed more so, bring up new things, respond to each other, agree, disagree. Whatever they like. They'll have 90 seconds each. We'll go around three times. We do have time for all our sessions. And I have drawn number five. So that will be you, Michael Bin. And you'll go first. You have 90 seconds. And then Isaac will assist with the microphone pass. And we're just going to go around three times. And I guess that means the last one will end with Sina. And it's your time, Uz. So we'd love to hear from you.
Feel free to stand as well, if you'd like.
Sorry.
I said, feel free to stand if you'd like, as well. You can work the stage, whatever.
So yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I mean, I think, as we've heard today, that there's a lot of issues facing the city. We have a lot of significant challenges, but I think we also have a lot of opportunities. Both because this is a community that's filled with community organizers, it's filled with people who have been working on these issues, whether it be immigrant rights issues, creating a municipal ID, our Food Justice Network, which is focusing on community gardens and local access to food, the Piedmont Environmental Council, which is looking on bike trails. There's a lot that council can take advantage and uplift. But it's one thing to talk about what we want, and another thing to implement. I think what we've seen is that council has been unable to unify around progressive visions for change and implement it because there's been a breakdown of trust between the local community and government. And I think it's really important for us to realize that that breakdown of trust has deep historical roots. There's legitimate reasons that people have lost trust in local government. And then as city council officials, we don't have trust by right. It's something that we have to earn. And I think in order for us to get to a point where we rebuild trust and are starting to implement change, we have to take a community organizing approach. And I think the work that I've done with Indivisible Charlottesville, Together Seaville, Low Income Housing Initiative, to me has shown the power of organizing, to work across differences, to reach out and uplift the work people, other people are doing. And I think if we take that approach, that's what it's going to take for city councils to start working together again. A top-down approach is not going to rebuild trust, and it may make it even harder to govern.
Right, so I'm building my campaign around this idea of the common good. And it's not just sort of atmospheric ideas. It's really real. I really, I would agree with most of what everyone's saying today. We really need to recantle the notion of the common good. My, my concern, though, is I, I definitely resonate with all of the things we want to do in terms of housing, in terms of investments in infrastructure, in terms of schooling. We need to do these things. But part of what I see my role as I go out is to help make the case to people in the whole community. And, and I think that we all should be striving to do that. So the other piece I would say is about city council. I think most people would say the last couple of city councils have not worked well together, for whatever reason. I, as a project manager, really, if you don't work well with other people, then you fail. That's what it's about. It's about finding common ground, listening to people, and trying to get to solutions. So again, I think that having that sort of perspective will allow me to actually get things done on council. Thank you.
So I want to follow up on a couple of thoughts that sort of fell to constraint by the 62nd rule. I mentioned when we were talking about the civilian review board for the police, that there was some low-hanging fruit that I thought the civilian review board ought to be looking at first. They don't need to go and worry about the data that they're trying to collect. Let me be very specific. And this comes from 39 years of being a criminal defense lawyer. I've seen how this works. Somebody gets stopped in their car, the police officer says, hmm, I think I smell marijuana. Under Virginia law, that's grounds for a service to the car. Interestingly, in my practice, the only folks who have that happen to them are black. All we need to do is to say to the police, as an internal matter, don't say that. No matter what the Virginia Court of Appeals may say, we don't want that kind of policing in the city. That can come through the civilian review board. And I actually mentioned it to Don Gathers, who was on the commission at the time back in September, as a, as a way that we could start to get something where we don't, you know, we've gotten bogged down on the review board over this question of how they're going to collect data. There are low-hanging fruit out there. That's one of them. There are another one is, you know, somebody gets stopped, and the police officer hands them back their license after they've written the ticket for the traffic, for the light being out or something. And then they say, any reason I should be getting reports that this car was selling drugs? Is somebody selling them drugs out of this car? No? We wouldn't mind if I lived around them, would you? And they end up, and it only happens to the black folks. That's something we can stop.
Well, I'm running to be a representative. And what that means is, I make, I, I go through a lot of time and effort to find out that the people of Charlottesville are thinking what they need, what they expect from their government. I am not one to formulate a grandiose plan. And I will give you the example of parking, of paid parking in the downtown mall. I, I don't think out of the hundreds of businesses down there, maybe three or four receptive to paid parking. It just made no sense. And yet, the city probably spent about a million dollars to implement that plan, only to shut it down. That's a, a parking czar that they hired, the office space, the pension, the time on staff, everything. So I continually reminded myself that it was a representative position. And I would propose to my fellow colleagues that we, we take that concept into the committees. Right now, there are council reps on the committees. And what they're there for is to, is to guide that committee to a certain policy goal. I would flip it around. If I was on a committee and I did this, I would just be quiet and listen to what the citizens brought to the council. Like I said before, a lot of talent out there I'd like to take advantage of.
I'm not going to stand up. Oh, no, I am going to stand up. I grew up here. This is my home. I wash clothes. It's the laundry on restaurant. I washed clothes. It's the laundry on Preston Avenue when I was a kid and went to Billy's party at the school now. I'm running here because for 16, 17 years, I worked quietly in the background, doing the work in our, in my neighborhood, working in this very building for four years. And then August happened and my husband was hurt. And that gave me and my whole family the push to say, we can't, we have to open our eyes wider. We have to take more of an active role in the decision-making if we can. Which is why I'm running, because I want my daughter and my family to have a city where everyone is welcome, where everyone has a good life and where everyone feels home.
So I guess I'll go in a slightly different direction in that there's an issue that lurks in the background of everything we discussed today. And that is that the biggest barrier to progress in Charlottesville is the Dillon Rule. It's a legal precedent established in the 19th century that's used by Republicans in the General Assembly that prevents us from implementing a $15 minimum wage. It prevents us from doing inclusionary zoning. It prevents us from, it constrains us in our revenue sources for regional transit authority. In fact, the General Assembly had to approve even allowing us to create a regional transit authority, which they recently did. So we're not really going to be able to strike at the root of all these issues unless we're talking about the Dillon Rule. And as a city, I think we do have some power to change that. We submit a legislative packet each year to the General Assembly. I think as part of that, we can raise awareness and ask the General Assembly to end the Dillon Rule. Other states have done that. And I think, yeah, it's just, you know, if we're not talking about that, we're sort of constraining ourselves from really solving some of these fundamental issues facing our city. And I think, you know, everyone here and, you know, as platforms, as candidates and on council, we need to be bringing attention to the legislative elections that are coming up in 2019. Every state's senate seat, every House of Representatives seat is up. And if we can flip the General Assembly, we might actually be able to start doing some really exciting things in Charlottesville. All it's going to take is one seat in both House, but we have to pay attention, canvas and vote.
Amen to Michael. And you... I think the thing that comes to mind, yeah, absolutely, I agree with what you said to say. That's exactly right. And it, it shows how we, all of these things are connected to what happens in Richmond. Obviously had a lot of distractions to put it mildly for Richmond recently. But for me, the last couple of years, one of the themes of sort of my life has been to sort of get off the sidelines and to jump in to helping make my community a better place. It's very easy to sort of say on social media or to do this and that and to feel like you're contributing. Those things can be important. But for me, really taking on, and so I respect the other people on this panel so much, the idea of caring enough for your community to really get involved civically. And part of what, part of what communities need is good leadership. That's, that's part of the common good. And so I just want to reflect the fact that it's important. Public service is important. Being engaged in civic life as a leader is important. I take it seriously. I know the other people here do too. Thank you.
So the flip side of being older than just about everybody up here is that I have more experience than just about everybody up here. If you want to talk about racism in the criminal justice system, I already mentioned the fact 39 years, that has been my life's work. And 30, 30-plus years ago, I was arguing in the US Supreme Court and getting death penalties reversed based on racism in the, in the trial. If you want to talk about affordable housing, 38 years ago, I began 10 years on the Board Directors of the Community Energy Conservation Program, which winterizes houses for poor people. I recently finished 12 years on the Board Piedmont Housing Alliance, including five other years as president. Along the way, I incorporated the Virginia Coalition on Jails and Prisons, the Greater Charlottesville Heptath for Humanity, also the Central Virginia Parrot Head Club, but that's another story. I've represented for free the Charlottesville Housing Improvement Program, MACA, OAR, CYFS, now known as Ready Kids. But my commitment is not to causes, it's to clients. I didn't stay late at the office working on a position paper on the death penalty. I stayed late at the office to argue for Michael Smith or for Willie Turner or for Joe Giratano. Our law firm motto is lawyers helping people who need help. That's the reason I'm running for city council.
Well, we have to mention the incidents around 2017. The city was grievously wounded, but yet scores of people, most of them young people, who will bear the effects of those wounds the rest of their life, seen as hospital, towered to death. And we're, it's taken us a long time to try to work our way through this. But I think this could be a turning point, this election. We can start with a new slate. We are a strong, resilient community. I know, I have lived here for about 45 years. We've gone through difficulties before. Some of them we haven't finished yet. We have a long road to go, but I have complete faith, partly because of, on a terrible day, all these people showed up to hear five people talk about community government. So that's sort of why I said I believe this is a representative's position that I'm running for. I think the best solutions to our problems come not from the council, but from the citizens of Charlottesville.
This in general is not my natural way of communicating with people. I'm much more about a one-on-one approach or a question and answer, back and forth versus talking to people. I think I've pretty much said why I'm running. So I'm going to pass this on to Michael. And if he'd like to contact me and sit down for a cup of coffee or talk on the phone, one-on-one, I am more than happy to do that.
So yeah, I mean, I think, I think I'm not alone in...